Okay, welcome everyone. It's Monday, December 13th, 2021. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. I just hope to certify the meeting notes.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Susan?
Here.
Next item is a pledge of allegiance. If you join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next items changes to the agenda, none from staff, none from council. Move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we would approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. And a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented in the discussion. Here now, per call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item F under special business. Ada County ARPA broadband fiber project presentation. Mr. O'Meara.
He's joining us remotely.
Oh, he's doing this remotely. Okay. When you're ready, Mr. O'Meara, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Evans. Good evening, council. My name is Steve O'Meara. I represent Ada County. I'm the chief information officer, or more simply, the IT director for Ada County. I believe in your packets. Please stop me if I'm incorrect. There's a map that my team put together. A number of weeks ago, I approached Ada County's Board of Commissioners with a plan to use some of the ARPA funds that Ada County was given to build out a fiber network across and throughout Ada County, which would allow us to fulfill the mission of ARPA in that it would allow, it would encourage to build out broadband access into areas that do not have good broadband today, and also give Ada County as a government the ability to help spur some cost efficiencies to help folks that are underprivileged and unable to afford the cost of entry for broadband. And in showing that to my three board members, they wanted to ensure that Garden City and as well as Eagle, Q and N Star mayors were included in that conversation, at least on the concept level, not that my board or that I'm asking you for anything, more along the lines that this is an important initiative for Ada County. And once we've fulfilled the the spirit of the rules behind President Biden's ARPA funds that were given to us, we could also turn around and utilize that same asset that was built to create a shared network between the cities and the county, which would foster a new type of data sharing across the governments, and also access to things that perhaps Garden City may not have access to. As a county, we have direct connections to various agencies within the state. If we had a strong network that we own together, or at least shared, which is what this concept is that you're looking at. It could provide some ease of access that Garden City may not have today. And then also additionally, we would look to slowly start adding more and more buildings within Ada County to this network and eliminate some of the least circuit options that Ada County has. So we're looking at some cost sharings on our side as we expanded that network. In showing Mayor Evans this, he requested I come in and at least show you the same information that he was given and that we discussed briefly because he wanted to make sure that the city council for Garden City was aware of the concept. Again, not asking anything today more along the lines of putting it out there that this is something that the county is working on and is one of their top ARPA projects at this time. I hope that sufficed, Mayor. I stand for any questions.
Great, thank you. So to summarize, from a layman's perspective, this would be a fiber network that connected the local governments in Ada County would be exclusive to them. And would you share briefly, you're the depository for a lot of information that is through the sheriff's office and so forth that we access through our police department, for example?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a significant benefit of Garden City Police connecting directly to Ada County. We have a lot of software that Garden City Police uses that's housed and hosted by Ada County. Of course, we have direct connectivity. The county prosecutor is part of the county, of course, a lot of information goes back and forth between the police department and and the prosecutor, and then even between the court system and the police. And we have a direct connectivity to Idaho Supreme Court. And as a matter of fact, we have a good portion of their network, their servers dedicated for Ada County, since our volume is so large compared to the rest of the state, we actually house some of their their structure, if you will, within our data center. And so this would be another, this would avoid, say, Garden City Police having to go through the internet trying to upload information to the prosecutors for these court cases. Instead, they would go directly from Garden City's network secured to Ada County's network to the state, which would speed things up and then also keep things a whole lot more. There's no middleman at that point.
Which is a security benefit, correct?
Yes, sir.
This is in the initial discussion stage. I'm pretty excited about it. Any questions, council? No. Great. Thank you. I think you got us covered. I think there isn't a specific action to take tonight, as you mentioned, but I think you can convey a favorable response of your presentation to the board of county commissioners.
Will do, sir, and we'll keep the mayor's office up to date as to as how things progress with us on our side.
Great. Thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you for letting, for the invitation.
Okay, next item under special business is item F2 in accordance with Idaho Code 50-412 entering the results of the voting in the minutes of the meeting and proclaiming the vote to be final for the election held on November 2nd, 2021 for the mayor of the city of Garden City and two council members to the city of Garden City Council. This is on page 31 in your packet. This is an action item. And the vote or the motion that we're looking for is to move to enter the results of the vote into our minutes.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we enter the results of the election from November 2nd, 2021 into the official minutes of this city council meeting.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Here now, per call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item F3. This is S U V F Y 2020-01 Mountain View Town Homes Extension Request. Is there someone here to represent them? Yes, sir. Would you join us at the voting? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
David Hale, 116 South 23rd Street in Boise.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. We received your letter in the packet. I think everybody probably had a chance to look at that. Feel free to highlight any of that, or?
Just some points, Mayor Evans, I'd like to make is that, as I stated in the letter, it's been a challenge trying to work with the previous owners of the property. Ownership changed hands. I've been in communication with them, at least trying to be in communication with them consistently. It's been challenging. Still trying to get them, the new owners out of Florida to sign off on the necessary easements that we're looking for.
You're talking about the owners of the?
The owners of Fred Meyer property.
Fred Meyer, yeah.
And as I said in the letter, I've been in contact with with the city regularly. Pretty much, I'd say on a monthly basis. Pulled a permit from A C H D, got the right-of-way work done, brought utilities into the site, still working towards trying to get these easements from the neighboring property owners.
Okay, so you're working on it.
Continue to work on it.
Counsel, do you have questions, Mr. Hale? Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Covered it pretty well in your letter. Yeah, all right. Thanks, sir. And we'll hear from staff briefly.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have much to point out, and extension requests are relatively straightforward. And Mr. Hale's letter pointed out his points and why he's asking for the extension. Thank you.
Great. Just for the record, nothing's changed as far as the city regular conditions for that project. There haven't been any substantive changes.
And Mayor, members of the council, to the best of staff's knowledge, the property remains compliant with code. That's one of the findings that's noted. And there's been no major changes in plans or policies that would affect this project through the city, nor have any applicable city regulations changed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, council matters before you. What's pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I find that good cause exists for an extension of this timeline. Pursuant to this Thornborough's testimony, I find the application and city regulations have not changed. And there's not been a change in the neighborhood plans or policies that would affect the compatibility of this project. The property does appear to be compliant with codes and laws, and that it is in the city's best interest to grant this extension. Therefore, I move that we do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale, for your explanation. You threw an explanation in a letter that's much appreciated. I would second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, per call roll.
Councilmember Susan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hale. Item F4. This item will cancel our city regular council meeting for December 27th, 2021 due to the Christmas holiday.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we cancel the meeting of Monday, December 27th, 2021.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Item G, this is a public hearing for S U V F Y 2021-0007. River Plate subdivision. Jay Gibbons with South Beck and Baird is requesting approval for the proposed 22 lot, single-family attached subdivision. You're here, Jay? Yes, okay. What we'll do, we'll get this set up. Mr. Gibbons will present his application. Afterwards, we'll have a staff report. Followed by opening of the public hearing. We'll have our public testimony. After which, Mr. Gibbons, you will have the final opportunity to address the council. Before we start, does anyone need to declare conflict regarding acting on this issue?
No.
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 Thank you. Always yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jay Gibbons. I represent the owner and South Beck and Baird. And my address is 2002 South Vista, Boise. River Plate subdivision is an infill project. It's located on three parcels that front Adam Street, just one, or two properties south and east of 40th Street. There is current, well, in the past, there were six mobile homes on the three properties, and we have since removed, I believe, all but one. In preparation of this, we've been going through the entitlement process with the city. And we've received positive recommendations for approval from the design review committee as well as the planning and zoning committee. Took multiple hearings and reconfigured our development proposal a few times to make sure that we came back with a better product than originally submitted. What we have is 20 units and six buildings on 20 lots. It is a single-family attached product. There are four threeplexes and there are two fourplexes. Equalling the 20 units, we also have two common area or common lots that provide not only the perimeter buffering along the streets and the perimeter property lines, but also we have 10% change of dedicated open space within the development between the buildings that have amenities in them for the use of our future residents. We do have a variety of housing types. The buildings are similar. But we do have a single-bedroom product, one car garage. We have, there are four of those. We have 16 two-bedroom, 14 two-bedroom with two car garages, and then two of the the units are three-bedroom with two car garages. There is a mix also in the garage on the on the ground floor. There's a flex room that we are also utilizing as office space for that particular property or the building, the unit owner. Some of them have internal access. Some of them also have external access, say, to the street or to the perimeter or to the interior circulation system that will get them to the street. We do, you'll see that we do have a a sign kind of proposed for the subdivision. It's a placeholder. We have not we have not included that in our application per se. We know we will come back with a sign application specific to that. But there were some questions early on, so we kind of wanted to show what we were thinking about. As I said, we've provided the city staff and committees a series of revised middle since July, basically, for each subsequent hearing. There were questions. We've come back with a revised proposal. We are to this stage. So as you can see, the layout of the site itself, the four-threeplexes, and then the two-fourplexes, the fourplexes actually have a scene that each end of that, of each of those four plexes, which are these two buildings, are two-story, and they are single-car garage and a single bedroom. We did learn through staff at our planning zoning hearing, that, or the last planning zoning hearing, that when we go to one bedroom, then that has actually raised an issue with parking numbers. Single-car garages, single-bedroom units actually require more parking spaces than the two-car garage, two-bedroom units, oddly enough, but that's the way code. So we have asked for a waiver of four parking spaces in that regard. This end unit nearest Adam Street actually could have one of those four on-street as its required parking, but we are asking for a waiver for four-three slash four. Also, in the middle of, in the center of the threeplexes, near the back of the property, we do have our bicycle parking century located. We also have a gazebo picnic shelter that provide, and the green space around it that provides a nice gathering space for the development. There's also the space between the two-fourplexes that is an open green space as well. We are required to provide a multi-use pathway connection to the property that is just to the south of us. I think it's 40th Street cottages, I think is the name of it. They were required as part of their development agreement to provide a pathway down the irrigation lateral there. And then subsequently, we're required to connect to that and connect it to Adam Street. We actually have two ways to do that. We do have a pedestrian access way that connects directly to that pathway to Adam Street and through our access drive and the irrigation easement that we needed to provide to the Irrigation Lateral Users Association. That is, we consider that a bikeway as well. So we can technically separate the bikes from the pedestrians and still get that pathway access. We do meet the city's open space requirements. So this is our plat layout. As you can see, all 20, each of the 20 units in the six buildings is an individual lot with two additional open space slots. And then we have 10 parking spaces. This is our open space. Our open space plan that city staff needed to see. You can see there's roughly 30% of our property is landscaped. About 30% is parking, and then you've got 30, 40%, you know, split between the buildings and all those uses, but we do have a pretty extensive landscape plan to go with this. We do have the east-west connection. There is a sidewalk along Adam Street. We have the pathway connection. As I stated, from the 40th Street cottages, we also have perimeter sidewalks to Adam Street along the front of each each building and unit itself. So a pretty good connectivity throughout. We had an artist put together a quickie sketch of what that picnic shelter, bike parking, green space area is or will kind of look like. And so one of our pretty pictures. And so we worked extensively with architect. We do have three-story products. And each unit does have a deck on the second floor of the living room, and then the bedrooms are upstairs. The ground floor is the parking garage plus the plus the flex/office space of each one. You can see the different colors of the different units. Does mean there are actually five different types and alternatives within these units. Though the buildings kind of look the same, the units within them are different from layout to use space-wise as well. So we've provided a mix of materials on the facades. These are, this is a fourplex. You can see each of the fourplexes is just, is a two-story with the single-car garage. We think that really, that started out as one eightplex, all three-story, like that really looked like the threeplexes themselves and great for continuity of buildings, but when we needed more open space and we needed better connectivity, we went to a different product type, and I think that really really makes the fourplexes stand out and shine. You can see there's, basically, we'll have our account units on the roof. They'll be hidden behind curbs. And we have common access drive between the, all the garages. One of the waivers was to, we asked to be allowed to have more than four units on a service drive per se, a common service drive. All of our units do have, there are two, there's a T service drive, but they're all on that. We think it's a really interesting development and has a lot of possibilities and is going to fit well within the future as Adam Street redevelops and there are more housing opportunities. We think that, you know, this is going to be a really nice product. Let's see, we have some vacant space next to us. So with that, I will stand for questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions of Mr. Gibbons? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll hear now from Ms. Thornborough.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It looks like I may have shared that again. I do think that Mr. Gibbons did a very thorough job in presenting the application as well as the process that it's gone through. And I do want to note a couple of typos that are in the staff report that starts on page 41 of your packet. The first of which is a remnant from the previous iterations that were alluded to noting a 22-lot subdivision that should state a 20-lot residential subdivision. And the second of which is on page 45 of the packet or page five of the staff report, which notes that there are 40 enclosed spaces that are proposed and also required by code, and that should be 36, and that helps make the parking issue make a little bit more sense. And the application did receive recommendations for approval by both the Design Review and Planning and Zoning Commission. The design review did see slightly different plans than what the Planning and Zoning Commission did. However, the reconciliation, there's no conflicting potential conditions of approval. And what had happened in the planning unit development code does require that residential projects do have a variety of housing types. The applicant addressed that in plans that were reviewed, as you're seeing tonight, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that did create a deficiency, as Mr. Gibbons noted, of four spaces. It's really free, and the code allows for one space on off-site to be counted. And so there will be a deficiency of three spaces if, should this be approved, and Planning and Zoning has recommended that that waiver be approved. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions of staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question. Mr. Thornborough? On page four of the staff report, under section C, discussion, in the second paragraph, the last sentence states, "The floor plans include two, three, and four-bedroom units." Is this also an error, or was at some point this development including three and four-bedroom units?
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen. That is an error. It's ones, twos, and threes.
Thank you.
Great. Any further questions of staff? Hey?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That will open the public hearing on S U V F Y 2021-0007. Is there anyone here that signed up to testify? Colin? Okay. No one present at City Hall has signed up to testify. If there's someone that's joined us virtually, if you would use the raise your hand function. then we will recognize you.
Mr. Mayor, we have Dawn. I, I don't know the last name who's raised his hand.
Okay, we have someone, first name is Dawn, that's raised their hand, if you would. Sir, give us your full name and address and then we'll take your testimony.
Yes, my name is Donald May. My ad, can you hear me okay?
Yes, would you spell your last name, please?
Yes, and like the month of May, M A Y.
Okay.
And my address is one-one-two East Forty-first Street. And hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for listening to me this evening. I just wanted to say I'm in support of the proposed developments, uh, proposed parking restrictions. And I'd like to state my support for the removal of all off-street parking requirements at the city level for both multifamily and commercial developments, including this development as advanced by Yale-educated UCLA urban planning professor Dr. Donald Shoup and subsequently adopted by multiple cities across the United States. Dr. Shoup's extensive fact-based research, which has resulted in two seven-hundred-page books, proves that parking requirements are actually best left to property owners themselves, not the government. Over a hundred cities across the US have adopted Dr. Shoup's three primary recommendations, and they are, one, city councils should remove all regulation of off-street parking requirements. In other words, developers and property owners themselves should determine their own parking requirements. Number two, city councils should install and subsequently charge fair market prices for parking meters for on-street parking via what's called the just-in-time Goldilocks-based pricing. And number three, city councils should spend that parking meter revenue to actually benefit the metered areas themselves where they're placed. And they can be used for police or lighting or anything else. Boise City is an example created in agreement with A C H D to allow the installation and management of parking meters. And Garden City can do the same. I've checked with A C H D. One might rightfully ask, how does removing all parking regulations of off-street parking possibly work? And the answer is, it's actually quite simple. It's always in the developer's best interest to provide enough off-street parking for future tenants. Simply put, if they do not provide enough future parking, future tenants will either not buy or nor rent their properties. Land is typically better used for development or green space instead of parking spaces, which research has shown is almost always dramatically underutilized and has extremely high financial costs. Now, in this case, the cost is cheaper, but if you put parking underneath a, a structure, for instance, it can cost up to thirty-five thousand dollars per space here in the Treasure Valley. And that's ultimately, that cost is passed on to home buyers and business owners in the form of higher housing costs and increased lease rates. A great source of videos, articles, and books on the subject is at Dr. Shoup's website called shoopdog.com. And in addition to metered parking, this is the last point, one can also provide neighborhood parking permits. So parking for the proposed development residence can be restricted as much as possible by city council to either just the adjacent streets or actually to all streets. What this ensures is that residents of the proposed development apartment do not, quote, "use up" on-street parking spaces. And that's all. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else that's raised their hand? I let the record reflect that we have had no other of our virtual attendees indicate an interest in testifying. With that, Mr. Gibbons, you get to close out.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight. And I hope that you'll look favorably on, on my project and, and we'll move forward if possible. So with that, again, thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. We'll go, we'll close the public hearing now at eight-thirty, six-thirty-five, eighteen-thirty-five, to you military folks. Turn it to the council for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As previously noted, I, I thoroughly appreciate all developers that come forward with infill developments. Also, as noted in other meetings, we continue to hear a need for family units. And I, I am somewhat concerned that we can, that this development leans significantly toward single individuals or potentially roommate situations and, and doesn't fully accommodate a family, uh, housing solution. So with that, I, I also, as likely you were expecting, I'm concerned about parking, notwithstanding Mr. May's advice and, and comments, I do believe that we are creating more and more parking issues by continually allowing waivers to parking requirements. This is becoming, you know, abundantly clear with the conversations I'm having with people and the feedback I'm receiving regarding parking along Forty-second Street. And as you watch the development along Adams, we are going to be facing the same or similar parking challenges and complaints. So therefore, I do have some concerns about the development as proposed.
Further discussion? There's no further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve S U B F Y two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve as a further discussion?
I would request that we modify the recommendation with condition of, of compliance to Garden City Code eight dash four, the dash five.
So maker of the motion was to modify his motion?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is the maker of the motion incorporating the typo corrections as the staff and the applicant?
Specifically the thirty-six parking spaces or whatever?
Well, the, the thirty-six in the unit.
From twenty-two to twenty.
And the, uh, there are no four-bedroom units.
Correct.
There are three, two, and one-bedroom units.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I get all that, Mr. Gibbons? Okay, okay.
And three-space deficiency with parking waiver request?
Yes, and the parking waiver request.
Four spaces, isn't it?
Three.
The request was four, but one is allowed by code to be on the street anyway, so.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The second stance, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Councilmember Jorgensen?
No.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Does that motion include adopting the proposed findings of fact and conclusions law that are in the packet as written or as modified, as amended?
Clarification?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it does.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Item G two, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Keller and Associates, Inc. for engineering design work for the sewer line replacement on Stockton. Mr. Schmidt is here, if there are any questions for him. This item is detailed in the council packet. I hear no questions, Mr. Schmidt, so it's pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the replacement of four thousand seven hundred. I have, L F? What is that? Linear feet? And you can tell I'm not an engineer of sewer line and all adjunct services and manholes in, uh, with an estimate of, of fifty-two thousand three hundred and ninety plus ten percent contingency for, uh, for a total not to exceed fifty-eight thousand.
I'd second that. You've got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here now with Kirk Colerole.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, next item, under unfinished business, reconsideration of appeal opinion of E S R F Y twenty-nineteen dash twenty-five. Okay, as we get into this, I have some things I need to read into the record. First of all, council members, does anyone need to declare conflict to act on this item? No.
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 Okay, thank you. On November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, the city council granted the request for reconsideration and will reconsider the appeal decision on D S R F Y twenty-nineteen dash twenty-five tonight, which is dated October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Next item of business, I need to ask the parties if they have any issues with the content of the record and/or the transcript and whether they intend on presenting any new evidence. I'll start with Ms. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Joanne Butler, nine-six-seven East Park Center Boulevard in Boise. The transcript is fine. We, we accept the transcript. We aren't intending to present any new information. We are concerned that the appellant below has introduced some new information, and we're concerned about that, but we'll address that as we go through this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carver-Herbert?
I do not have anything to correct, and I do not have anything other than what I've provided already.
Okay, thank you. There was a letter from Mr. Truax received today, on today's date. It's not in the packet because it was untimely submitted. We're dealing with the discussion and decision we made a month ago, and we're not taking, this isn't a public hearing, so we won't be addressing testimony. Also, I need to confirm for the record, again, Ms. Butler, if I can call you back, that the applicant is not objecting to the appellant on the appeal, Wendy Carver-Herbert being given an opportunity to testify.
It is our reconsideration hearing. I appreciate the council's willingness to provide as much due process as possible to the appellant, and so we're not going to object.
Okay, thank you. The standard of review is whether there are any deficiencies in the appeal decision, which the council has discretion to decide. Attorney Joanne Butler with the law firm Butler Spink, representing Vida Properties, submitted the request for reconsideration. Therefore, it is Joanne Butler and Vida Properties' burden of proof to try and establish that there are deficiencies in the appeal decision. At the commencement of the public meeting, I have, uh, I can establish, the American established a time limit to be observed by all speakers. The default time limit is as follows. Reconsideration, applicant attorney Joanne Butler and/or Vida Properties to describe the alleged deficiencies in the appeal decision and reasons that the applicant needs requirements. We want to try to hold to fifteen minutes. I'm not going to strictly enforce that. We need to get this stuff, anything that we need to have on the record, on the record. And I, same would go for Ms. Carver-Herbert. Okay. This is not a public hearing. The members of the public will not be allowed to testify. Rebuttal by the reconsideration applicant Joanna, Charlie's got a big confidential right through the middle of this. So if I'm stumbling around a little bit, I'm, I'm having to figure that out, sorry. Rebuttal by the representing applicant attorney Joanne Butler and/or Vida Properties, Mike Talbot. No due evidence unless specifically allowed by the mayor. Only information from the record to rebut assertions by contrary testimony. Reconsidering the appeal decision on the following allegations in the reconsider request. City council conclusion that the proposed design is not compliant with the standard that it be in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulations of that district is not supported by the factual record or the Garden City Code and is itself in error. The city council conclusion that the proposed design is not compliant with the standard that the proposed design adheres to standards for the protection of health, safety, and general welfare is not supported by the factual record or the Garden City Code and is itself in error. The appeal decision does not specify the actions, if any, that the applicant could take to prove, to obtain approval. The council can affirm, reverse, or modify the appeal decision. Possible grounds for affirming the decision would be a finding that there are no deficiencies in the appeal decision. If there was no error, and what is the additional basis of the conclusion that the proposed design is not compliant with the standard that it be in conformance with, with the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulations of that district? If there were?
Can you read that again?
Okay. If there was no error, what is the additional basis of the conclusion that the proposed design is not compliant with the standard that it be in conformance with? And that would be the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulations in that district. If there was no error, what is the additional basis of the conclusion that the proposed design is not compliant with the standard that it be in conformance with the, uh, proposed zoning district and all dimensional regulations of that district? The appeal decision does not specify the actions, if any, that the applicant could take to obtain approval. Wendy Carver-Herbert previously affirmed in the appeal that two items were being appealed, design standards and parking standards. Therefore, only the above issue should be considered in the reconsideration. That would be design standards and parking standards. Possible grounds for reversing or modifying the decision. There are the following deficiencies in the appeal decision. The reconciliation request raises following claims. The city's council conclusion that the proposed design is not compliant with the standard that it be in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulation of that district is not supported by the factual record or the Garden City Code and is itself in error. If there was an error, what should be the basis of the conclusion that the proposed design is compliant with the standard that it be in conformance with the purpose? That the proposed design is compliant with the standard that it be in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulation of that district. The city council conclusion that the proposed design is not compliant with the standard that the proposed design adheres to standards for the protection of health, safety and general welfare. Not supported by the factual record or the Garden City Code and is itself in error. If there was an error, what should be the basis of the conclusion that the proposed design is compliant? With the standard that it be in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulation of that district. The appeal decision does not specify the actions, if any, that the appellant could take to obtain approval. If this was an error, what actions, if any, can the applicant take to obtain approval? Okay. With that. We're ready to proceed. Yes, Mr. Talbert, welcome. Yes, just hand them to Lisa there and she'll get them to us. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, at this point of order, what the council's being handed right now, it's in the council packet. Beginning at page two twenty, so what the council's being handed is not new information.
Welcome, Mr. Talbot. If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Michael Talbot, seventeen forty three Bannock, Boise. Mayor Evans, members of council, Mr. Waddams. Thank you very much for the putting in the midnight oil in reviewing this request. This request was because we needed. An opportunity to clean up and clear up some of the fiction and replace it with some of the facts. I appreciate that the brevity is wished for here, as Mayor has indicated. But this project is so important to Garden City and the Valley that we must get this right. There have been some erroneous facts and details disseminated on this application from the. Interpretations and from the staff report. I see this procedure as a check-in box process. Here are the checks for each box as I saw them in the application. We are not underparked but overparked by one car. We are not dependent on or required to have a cross park agreement for this application or project. We have changed from a CUP, a non-permitted use, to a permitted use. We are not in violation of the C two zone within Garden City's ordinance. We comply with the city's comp plan. Public services, fire, police, highway district and sanitary of all indicated in favor of this project and can serve this building. We have improved traffic by reducing forty five percent of the original application on the hotel. Our footprint. Is increased by six percent from the hotel application. Our site coverage has reduced has reduced by fourteen percent. The change in commercial space from the old to new is only three hundred and forty square feet. We are three hundred and forty square feet less in commercial retail than the original hotel application. We were a mixed use when we applied and approved, and we still are a mixed use application today. DRC did not err. I must ask, what did DRC miss? The city relies on the staff and the appointed DRC committee to do their job. They spent time from staff meetings and several public hearings, and they got it right. The comment made by the applicant or the appellant, excuse me, this would set a precedent. Was grossly inaccurate. What it does take is the city's direction from their code, their zoning, their comp plan, and complemented Garden City. It is a significant opportunity. I also heard that this project was not popular within the Valley and Garden City residents. If so, where are these people? At our neighborhood meetings, our public hearings and et cetera, I have inquired and discussed this project with everyone I come across. Neighbors, real estate professionals, business owners in town. And patrons at the different retail and restaurants that I visited. And I did not meet anybody. That was against this project. They were excited for it. They liked the progress. It was a very sexy thing to bring into Garden City. In conclusion, I'd like to use again the word brevity. In the beginning, in a hope of council needs more clarity, details, or just a further discussion. That we can have that tonight. We need to make this decision on facts, not fiction. Vita is pouring tens of millions of dollars of investment capital into Garden City. We care very much with Garden City's success and progress. This project offers solutions, capital to growth, and we are not interested in setting a precedent. We're setting an opportunity. And having said that, I would like to invite Joanne Butler to come up and brief more on the memo we just handed out.
Thank you again, Joanne Butler. Just to clarify, you asked Mr. Mayor about any objections. We don't have any objections in this Carver Herbert speaking to the council tonight. We do object to the written materials. We found that they were full of factual errors. I don't have. I've got very little time, precious little time to go over everything tonight, so we're not going to respond to that. That written statement and just point out that we are objecting for the record. I want to thank the council for reconsidering its decision. Our written memorandum that we provided, and we hope our presentation tonight is intended to show you. That the design review committee did its job in reviewing the application for the boardwalk residences. Just as the council intended when it delegated design review authority to the committee. I also wanted to start out by saying that land use is not legal jujitsu. Land use is not either rocket science, and it's often nothing more than making sure that the boxes are checked. Boxes that the city tells the applicant it must meet, boxes that it tells the design review committee that it has to make findings on. When our clients like Mr. Talbot come to see. The architects or the lawyers or the engineers, the question is very often nothing more than what do the rules say? That's what they're asking us to tell them, and our job is to review your code. And our job is to work with staff on pre-application meetings, so we know exactly what the rules say. Our job is to work with the design review committee in this case, so until the committee is comfortable. And that it can reach the findings that the council tells it it has to reach. That's what happened with the twenty nineteen application that was decided in twenty twenty, and that's what happened with the application that was made and decided in twenty twenty one. I'll try to structure this as a then and now overview. In twenty twenty, the design of the Boardwalk Hotel accommodated a hundred and forty eight transient guests. Plus ground floor retail play space plus ground floor pub space and a rooftop bar and restaurant to serve those transient guests. The bulk of the retail space that would have served the old boardwalk hotel is actually located at the boardwalk. The boardwalk apartments that are immediately east of this. Parcel across forty sixth street to the east. Pages six and seven of the handout that I've provided showed are from the twenty nineteen and the twenty twenty one application. That show the relationship between east and west of forty first street. Today, in twenty twenty one, the boardwalk residences is a permitted use. In the zone that will house one hundred and eleven permanent residents of Garden City, plus provide ground floor retail space. The retail space located across to the east of forty first street is not going away. It is still going to serve the permanent residents at this location. At the last hearing, the council speculated or asked or contemplated an increase in the ground floor retail at the boardwalk residences. And also the addition of a of a top floor bar and restaurant. We can certainly, that can certainly be part of your decision here tonight. State quote gives you that authority. The parking matrix on the last page of the handout that was part of the written materials that we provided to the council. Shows that if we were to do that, if we were to increase. The retail space on the ground floor and provide a top floor restaurant and bar, we would reduce the number of residences from one hundred and eleven to. One hundred and eight, so that we would actually exceed the number of required parking spaces overall. So that's something that the council raised that, and we would certainly absolutely consider that and offer that. The process in twenty twenty was the same as in twenty twenty one. One council member amused at our last hearing that the committee is not elected, and perhaps it was implying that the committee's work is something less than what the council does, but no. The council has delegated its design review authority to the committee members as experts in their field. Your city code is clear that the committee works in partnership with applicants on design review. And serves as an expert on all matters of design that come before the city. The committee meets with the applicant until the committee firmly believes that the applicant complies with the required design review findings. And I'm paraphrasing a portion of your code. The committee did its job well in twenty twenty and it did its job well in twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty one, the property owner, for a number of reasons, none of which are relevant for design review. Worked with its architect to redesign the boardwalk hotel into the boardwalk residences. Both Garden City Code and actually the committee's conditions of approval that were adopted in twenty twenty require. That the property owner, if there's any structural change, they have to come back to the committee for review of the design structure. So again, in twenty twenty one, the property owner had pre-application meetings with staff. They had public hearings with the committee until the committee again decided in twenty twenty one that the application meets the designer view findings as required. There was no. Error in that approval. In twenty twenty and in twenty twenty one, the zoning standards were completely met. In twenty twenty, the committee determined that all of the zoning standards required by the city were met, especially parking standards. The required mixed use and retail parking spaces were established with a parking study approved by the planning official, and that was not challenged. In twenty twenty, the hotel was actually overparked by nine spaces, and there was no cross parking requirement. In twenty twenty one, the alleged failure to meet the parking standard for residential use. Is the reason given by the appellant. The claim that this is the reason that the council could overturn the deliberate decision of the committee. But all zoning standards, including parking, were again met in twenty twenty one. All of the required parking is contained on site and does not require any cross parking. All one hundred and eighty nine parking spaces per residential are enclosed, even though the city code requires only forty percent of those spaces being closed. We do hope that we've adequately explained in our written materials that the reference to cross or shared parking in the committee decision. Has nothing to do with this parcel or the application. It was an appeal in twenty twenty. There was an appeal in twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty, the decision was appealed in large part because it was felt that the roads could not accommodate traffic. And again, because of a misunderstanding that the applicant requested a reduction in parking standards, which was not correct. The councilment, the council heard and deliberated on that appeal. Councilmember Beaumont. And Councilwoman Higgins moved and seconded to approve the. Design review decision. One council member without. Comment did not vote to approve that. The design review decision. I don't know what councilmember Suzie's reasons were, but he did not vote to approve the design review approval. In twenty twenty one, the commission's decision was appealed again because of the misinformation about parking. As we've been talking about, the ability of the roads to handle traffic did not come up, we suspect because the boardwalk residence. The projected traffic is forty five percent less than that at the hotel. The purpose of the C two zone is met, which is to permit activities that are more compatible with mixed use. Or residential uses and minimally disrupted to the neighborhood. They are to be located in the C two district. When prompted, the appellant also said she believed that not meeting the parking standards could infringe on the public health, safety and welfare. We don't disagree with that statement. Zoning codes are enacted to protect the public's health, safety and welfare. And because these legitimate permitted uses at this location, the retail use and the residential use, which are permitted. And because they meet all of the zoning codes for those uses, the public's health, safety and welfare remains protected. Under your comprehensive plan, the intended character of this neighborhood is an activity node and a transit oriented development that encourages density. The intended character guided by the comprehensive comprehensive plan and implemented by your adopted zoning ordinance. Including height. Shows that the city's legislative standards are in place and protect the health, safety and welfare. In the council's decision, they attempted to bolster their decision. By making three points, which we want to point are are either not true or not appropriate. One, that the development is substantially different from the initial development due to a larger footprint. We've provided the information to show you that the overall site coverage has been reduced substantially, and the footprint has increased minimally. The council said that the parking requires cross across parking agreement, and that is not correct. The council said that the development is no longer commercial in nature. The question I have for that is, so what? The project remains permitted. Those uses are permitted under the C two zone. They are permitted by right. The project has changed, and that change is completely permitted by code. Yes, the applicant does have to go through design review again. This is required by code and the previous conditions of approval, and they have done that. We are asking the council to reinstate the committee's decision as proper and without error. We are certainly willing to increase the retail square footage at the site. On the ground floor and the eating establishment on the top floor to serve the permanent residents as they would have served the transient residents. Finally, the appellant has repeatedly said that the boardwalk residence will set a precedent in Garden City, as though that is so. That's that's been a negative connotation, but this is not correct. There is not a single project in Garden City like the ones you had before you tonight. Every project is reviewed on their own merits under the code. But this project does make a statement for Garden City. I think it does make a statement, a statement firmly allowed by the guidance. And the implementing codes of the city. We believe it's an exciting statement for the city. We thank you for hearing our our request for reconsideration. We firmly believe that the the design review. Committee, your delegated body. Did a good job reviewing this project, as did staff before it in making its recommendation. And we ask you please to reinstate the. Committee's decision. We're here to answer any questions. Chad Walton is here. Andy Ursted is here. We don't want to just speak to the council. We're here to answer questions, and if we have, if you have those questions, please ask. Thank you.
Thank you. What I think we'll do is we'll hear from Ms. Carver Heard. And then. Any. Questions of Ms. Butler, we can, and the team, we can do when they come back for rebuttal. At our council?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I bring up two points of order real quick? Just housekeeping matters?
Sure.
First of all, they, Ms. Butler and Mr. Talbot handed out these handouts. I just want the record to reflect what they are. I previously said that the drawings or the renderings or whatever they are in the packet, starting on page 220. I just wanted to make a record that the last page of the handout, and we will include this handout in the record, but it talks about a parking matrix. That is not new information. That parking matrix is referenced in Ms. Butler's memorandum on page 201 of the council packet, so that's also, that's not new information. So I just wanted to make the record clear on that. The other point of order is that we heard Ms. Butler, Mr. Talbot object to the written materials that Ms. Carver-Herbert has submitted. I don't know if the council wants to make an action or consider whether or not to look at Ms. Carver-Herbert's materials in light of the fact that there is now an objection. Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, given the openness and candor of Ms. Butler and Mr. Talbot and their willingness to allow Ms. Carver-Herbert her time to share her opinions, I would raise no concern unless Ms. Butler wants to request the council does not consider Ms. Carver-Herbert's materials.
My understanding that has been objected to.
Yes, we've noted the objection.
Mayor and council are a little bit of a disavantaged because I don't know what the specific objection is, what the specific information is that they, that they take issue with.
If we want to, if we want to deal with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Butler to go through the letter after Ms. Herbert, Carver-Herbert does her testimony, and on rebuttal, she can deal with that. That work for you, Joanne? Yeah, my question is, after Ms. Carver-Herbert testifies, if her letter is admitted into the record and is discussed, then you would have an opportunity to be specific with your objection and rebut whatever you need to from your perspective in that letter. Is that?
Okay. I will do my darndest to do that.
Okay, that's, that's, I think, the way I work for the council. Okay, that's the way we'll proceed. Carver-Herbert, welcome. Name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Wendy Carver-Herbert. I live at 8515 West Atwater Drive in Garden City. So I do appreciate the mayor and council for, and the applicants for allowing me to stand and to, at least to try to rebut what, what I, what they have, what I, what they have provided and for allowing me to be able to provide some additional insight. As I mentioned in my letter that you'll find in your packets on page 223 through 228, you know, I'm obviously outgunned in terms of resources and skills. I'm not an attorney, I'm a private citizen. So understanding the ins and outs of procedural law is something that's not something that I'm really familiar with and really did my earnest best to try to rely upon the record in pulling the information together that I provided. I can only take a guess, I guess, at this point, what I believe that the applicant is taking issue with. But, you know, my original testimony that I provided in writing and before this council, I stand by that count, by that testimony. And, you know, it only, I can only imagine that maybe some of the concern that's being raised by the applicant may be in the exhibits that I provided. And essentially, I pulled all of that data out of public records, and the exhibit information in terms of the parking that the applicant was going to provide, I used the city code, the residential code to apply the information in Exhibit B. I guess where I could see maybe some concern might be in terms of coming up with the percentages of what might be commercial in the original project versus the proposed projects. But again, I did pull this information as best I could from the project information from the beginning. And I could say, I guess, I did do some math to try to figure out the percentages, but all of the information in terms of the numbers were all in the public record. And again, in Exhibit C particularly, all of that data was, is in the public record. In fact, it's on the provided cover sheet that was included in the applicant's plans that they provided to the design review. That's, that is Exhibit D. Majority of that information that I provided in these matrices was pulled from that. The only thing that I added to that, but I've spoken to it to great extent, is the parking requirements under Garden City 8-4D-5, which is the residential parking requirements for the city. So I think what is deeply concerning to me is the fact that a parking study was accepted by the planning official and was taken into consideration by the design review. And yet, there were so many factors that were available, including the fact that we have a residential parking standard for the city. And I understand that there are a large number of data points that perhaps is missing from the Garden City Code as it relates to parking. And in many cases, the city does look to the city of Boise when trying to determine some of these pieces of information. But the point that I make, that the one piece of information that they have access to is residential parking standards, that that should be a basis, that when they are looking at a project, and with this particular case, was 100% commercial. And I get it, a hotel is classified a little bit differently than retail and a little bit differently than office. But at the end of the day, it's all commercial. 100% of this application was originally a commercial project. Just take it by itself, take out everything else about this particular project. When they modified the project, it was a change of use. It went from 100% commercial to a residential project with a very, very minute amount of commercial. And that can constitute a change in use, which in the parking standards, it does stay. And on page 223 of my testimony, it does say that that Garden City 8-4D-B states, "Upon any change of use, the number of vehicle parking spaces to be provided shall be calculated according to the requirements of this article for the new use." I maintain that that is the one piece of information when it comes from a predominantly commercial building to a residential building that at a minimum, the planning officials should take into consideration Garden City's residential parking standard, because that is the one parking information that is in our code, and that they should not rely upon another city's guidance for determining what might be best. Now, I remind you that the parking study was provided by the applicant. And it's important to note that that parking study, actually, to the best of my knowledge, at least of what's available online, still only includes the information concerning, approaching it from the perspective that it was a hotel. They never, to the best of my knowledge, did not change that parking study to accommodate the fact that it went from 100% commercial to 111-unit residential development with 2,000 square feet of commercial space. Again, the use has changed, and that's why I'm not 100% sure in terms of the statements that the applicant makes, Mr. Talbot makes about the fact that there's actually plenty of parking, because if you take into consideration the guest parking, that's where things really start to go askew. And I think we could probably debate all day in terms of whether it's too much or not enough. But the reality is, it doesn't really matter because the residential parking standard clearly identifies that it is a half a space per unit. And that's how I came up with the facts under, in Exhibit C for required parking per Garden City 8-4D-5. Again, the proposed parking was provided by the applicant. The mixed unit was provided by the applicant in their application in the cover sheet in Exhibit D. If those are the statistics that you're looking at, if you're to choose not to accept anything else, I believe that this is all information is clearly established in the record and clearly establishing Garden City Code. Those would be the points that I would, I think, that I would really choose to try to stick by. I would hope that the council would still take into consideration the other aspects that I brought into my testimony, into the written testimony. But the points that I believe that are most important to take into consideration are particularly when you take a look at the parking and the comparison of what the applicant proposes in their, in their application and what the actual Garden City Code is, and the dramatic difference in terms of the numbers of what is being proposed that they will provide versus what Garden City Code requires under the residential parking standard. I do believe that they consider this a mixed use because it has some of the commercial. And, but I just strongly disagree with that premise.
Thank you. Since this is Ms. Carver-Herbert's opportunity to testify, her questions of her, we take those now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but I do have a question for Ms. Carver-Herbert.
Okay.
I really appreciate you being here this evening. After your testimony, I want, I want to clarify. Would you agree that Garden City can use other city codes when our code is silent?
I believe that the code should be clear. I do believe that we shouldn't be relying upon other cities to provide the guidance that's necessary to operate the city. I believe it's, it is complete lack of clarity within the Garden City Code.
Notwithstanding a need to update the code, would you agree that we have to operate based on the code as it is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We'll hear from the respondent now. Ms. Talbot, you're going to begin?
I will begin.
Okay.
And Mike Talbot, 1743 Bannock, Boise. Ms. Carver, your passion's awesome, and there's nothing personal here regarding this debate. But truly, we struggle with the definition of parking and how you calculate it. In the original approval we received in the DRC and then finally appealed through council, we were promoting a 1 to 8 parking ratio for guest parking. It's been approved, it's been accepted, and that's what we're building next door at the boardwalk. In that entire mixed-use application, that's the standard we live by, and that is the standard we submitted to you folks for our new project, 1 per 8. That significantly skews her calculations on how we were underparked. If you look merely at that factor, we are absolutely overparked, one by one now, but nine plus when we're in the original hotel application. So it's again, just, it's not a matter of public record or the facts that are available to her. She's disseminating that information as best she can, but she's misinterpreting what has already been approved and ordained within our application and then the modification we submitted. Whether we are a commercial use or not is irrelevant to the parking calculation. We'll succeed that argument with it for a moment and just say, okay, we aren't commercial at the percentages we were originally for the hotel. But our calculations, as you see in your matrix, are completely compliant to the residential standards within Garden City. They do recognize and adhere to the residential portion. Another contention I would have, again, friendly contention, that we are a mixed use. By definition of your codes and your ordinance, we have 60, 200 square feet of retail. That's what we had before, whether we counted the hotel as 100% or not. There's nothing in your code that says you need a certain bar or a certain percentage of retail to qualify as a mixed use. So we don't see it as a change. We were in an original application with mixed use. We still are an application for mixed use. And we are a permitted use. We've come back from the CUP to a permitted use within this, within the code. I think that's all I will address. I know Ms. Butler has a few responses as well, and I'll turn it back over to her. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joanne Butler. I appreciate what Mike said about Ms. Carver-Herbert's passion because if you believe that the parking standards are not met, you're going to be upset, and you should be. And that's why we went through a lot of pain in, or work in our memorandum. And I'm going to turn you to page 196 in your packet, where we went, we, we took the effort to try to explain why we meet all of your parking standards, because this is a mixed-use project. Ms. Carver-Herbert, although she didn't quote the section of code, there is a section of code that said if there's a change of use, you look again at the parking standards. The mixed use remains, but we are going, we are, will grant that we're doing permanent residence as part of that mixed use. So we did look at the parking standards, and we completely meet the residential parking standards. So the residential parking standards are met, I'll come back to that, as augmented by the parking standards of the parking studies related to retail space and to guest parking. And on page 196 of your packet, you'll see a table that calculates the number of residential parking that we are required to have, and it's based on bedrooms per unit. We're required to have 189 residential parking spaces. We are providing 198. If you look in footnotes 13 and 14 below the table, there's, the ratio used for guest parking and the ratio used for retail space parking standards is explained because you don't have a code section that relates to guest or retail parking standards. You refer to, in this case, Boise City. Yes, could you change your zoning ordinance to adopt what is done in other cities? Yes, and maybe that's something that you would like to do. But as was explained to the design review committee on their, in their August hearing, the guest parking spaces at Boise is actually 1 per 10. We provided more at 1 per 8, and that was at the advice of staff who let us know that in other projects in Garden City, 1 per 8 is typically used. We wouldn't want to be treated any differently than anybody else in Garden City. We wouldn't want to be treated any differently than anybody else in Garden City, and so we use that parking ratio. Likewise, it was explained to the DRC that the retail parking standards. Of one space per three hundred is considered has been considered reasonable in Boise and Garden City. And used for other commercial projects in the city. So what we did was. When we went from the hotel use to the multifamily plus retail. We looked at the parking standards for residential. We completely meet that parking standard. And we also use completely meet the retail and guest parking as provided by the parking study. Yes, we did have, we and I won't go through it in detail. Our objection is to. The fact that the the facts and figures in the exhibits are incorrect and too much to. To go through, but it is important to know that we do meet the residential parking standards for multifamily. We more than meet the parking standards for enclosed parking. And we meet all of the standards for retail and guest parking as provided in the adapted parking study. Thank you.
I have a question. Was the traffic study updated? Forty-five percent reduction in traffic hotel versus the multifamily?
Was the parking study updated? No, you know, that was an issue that.
I'm talking about traffic.
Said traffic.
Oh, is the traffic study updated after, based on the four the projected forty-five percent? I don't know the answer to that. Perhaps somebody else in the team does.
Okay. Okay.
I do have a question for Ms. Butler. I I beg the the council's indulgence, since I was not on the council at the inception of this project, I do have a question for Ms. Butler. To try and help clarify some of the confusion that I think was created. I apologize. On your memorandum on page two, the bottom footnote. To explain, although I've read it a couple of times, can you further explain? What the purpose of the cross or the fourteen temporary spaces? Because I believe if I'm reading and understanding, I believe this is where some of the confusion came in. Regarding cross parking, etc. Could you further explain that footnote to me, please?
I'm going, I'm sorry, can you tell me where you're looking at? So I'm.
Oh, sure. I I'm sorry, I in your memorandum. Page two. Your final footnote down at the bottom, it begins to explain in twenty twenty.
Shall I just jump in?
It's fine with me.
My in the in the part in the staff report for this parcel. There's a condition of approval, and I'm going to ask Jenna Thornborough to take my foot out of her mouth if I make a mistake here. But my understanding is, is that when the when it came through design review, the design review committee. Did not want to lose the fact that on the parcels east of Forty First Street. The four oh six place and the boardwalk apartments have the requirement for fourteen temporary spaces or shared parking between the two of them. Which shared parking, I think, will go away when all of the construction is complete, but I think there's some shifting. As construction is going on and and the. Design review committee did not want to lose that condition and asked that that condition remain in the staff report. In retrospect, we probably should have asked that it remain in the original staff report for twenty nineteen. But not gum up the works with regard to this particular parcel. But that it that fourteen temporary spaces during construction relate to the parcels east of Forty First Street. Also, I I wanted to say with regard to that forty-five percent projected traffic, my understanding is that was a projection that ACHD. Provided in its review of the project.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, I'm sorry, I have one clarifying. Questions. Or maybe for you, Mr. Talbot. In the handout that we received. On the last page. There's a parking matrix. And it does reference. It does reference. As I read this, the reduction from one hundred and eleven to one hundred and eight units. You've got the one to eight parking ratio for guests. An increase to the ground for retail. And. Eighteenth floor bar and restaurant.
I apologize for interrupting. Can you give me a page number to reference?
Page two oh one.
Okay, thank you.
Well.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, you're referencing the last page of the handouts that was given us today, and that's the parking matrix. That parking matrix is also in. The council packet on page two oh one.
Okay, you're right. I knew I'd seen it. I just. Misunderstood the page now. So the presumption is that would be a change from the original modification to the original. Submittal that the council denied. And the presumption is this is something that you are willing to do?
Yes, sir. Ms. Jorgensen had the idea of and was disappointed in losing the restaurant bar on the top of the hotel. And we entertained that and went back and looked at that, and I think. Counsel as a whole was saying they'd like to see more retail and commercial. And so we decided to go back and quite actually, I'm very appreciative that she had the idea, because it was one of my favorite things on the hotel. So we have added the restaurant and bar to the top of the building. We've reduced the number of units now to one oh eight from one eleven. And we've increased the footages, and you see the matrix here that shows how we've readjusted the parking and we're still over parked by one.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. So it's your testimony. You did this in response to the discussion of council.
I see. We took the advice of council and went with it.
Okay. Council questions, clarifications? Okay, with that. We'll go ahead and move on to the next phase of the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, can I try to help with a point of order?
Yes, you may.
Before you before the council goes into deliberations, I'm going to try to share screen and hopefully. For the council and for the members of the public, what I have on the screen is on page, starting on page two fifteen of your packet. And after everything's being said. Page two fifteen. On the request for reconsideration, they raised two issues that they say basically that the decision is in the air. And the first alleged deficiency is this one we're looking at right now. The Mr. Talbot, Ms. Butler said that the council erred in making this determination. So the standard is the proposed design appears to the standards for the protection of health, safety and general welfare. That's something that has to be there for this project to go forward and be approved. Counsel in this decision decided, determined that they were not in compliance with the standard, and here's the rationale right here. We've heard from Ms. Butler, Mr. Talbot, that they disagree with this, and I thought I could just leave this up here for the council's deliberation and for the public to take a look at. The other basis for the alleged error is the second, excuse me, the third standard, I think. Too far, and I can bring these, I'll just bring these up as we go along, but. There are two standards that they take issue with, and the first standard is right here. The proposed design is in conformance. Counsel said, no, it's not. And then the second standard that they take issue with is on page two sixteen, which is this one. So I'll try to keep this on the screen as the council deliberates to aid the council in their decision.
Okay. We can begin our deliberations. The council. Can affirm. Your previous decision. You can reverse your previous decision, or you can modify your previous decisions. So. We've had some. Clarifying. Information conveyed to the council. And. One additional. Item that. We failed to do last time was. Indicate what the applicant could do to obtain approval. If anything, so. I think that's the basin basis to open up the the discussion. Well, I don't get to vote, so. But I can. I'll just point out some observations I've had. It. I support the project as amended. I think. Number one, it is a permitted use in the zone. It's a departure, significant departure from what was there before. So is the waterfront district. It's a significant departure from. What was there before? The Forty Second Street. Three-story. Townhouses. Significant departure. We're seeing a really interesting evolution of the redevelopment there. One thing about this project I do like has maybe not much to do with the. Hundred and eight living units with the public improvements on the green belt. We've got congestion. Through there now. This would, in my view, with the widening of the path, with the reconstruction of the path from asphalt to concrete. Kind of a destination place with with the restaurant and other amenities there. Is it going to change down there with four oh six and the boardwalk in this building, if you allow it? It is, just like everything east of the fairgrounds is changing. We're seeing it incrementally from the Riverside Hotel, including the Riverside Hotel, frankly. Coming west. You know, I I think they've responded to the discussion the council had at the last meeting. And they met the requirements of the city code, so I hope you'll act favorably. On that, on what's been offered up as a modification. So that's my two cents, but I don't get to vote, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As. As I reviewed the the request for reconsideration and all the information that was provided. I do provide a lot of weight to the memo and information that Mr. Waddams provided. I found it very informative, particularly the discussion regarding Houseville four eighty. And how it clarifies and outlines not only the the. The purpose of a comprehensive plan and the limitation that that has to Luba. But also in the restatement of private property rights. I also. Gave serious consideration to our code, to our parking code. And. It is what we what it is, and and although it's not perfect right now, and we may not, it may not be serving the intent. It is the the code that we have to act on, in my opinion, and. Having, you know, read and reviewed Ms. Butler's information in in great to great detail several times. I do believe that. For my part, I was in error in my interpretation and that and therefore I do believe that I would. I would move to modify to include the proposed allowances that Ms. Butler had outlined in her memorandum. Memorandum, which would bring the expand the commercial use to include the. The bar slash restaurant on the rooftop. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was reading and listening. Was that in the form of a motion, or were you just discussing?
I was just discussing so that my fellow council members could understand my thought processes at this point.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I. I will say that I misinterpreted. Project, the the appeal. With the, as to the. Previous cross parking agreement, I misunderstood the agreement to. To burden the project that is now before us not to benefit. Four oh six place and and whatever other project will come to the east of that. Much of my confusion. And concern about about parking has been. Mitigated today. With regard to. The safety component that Mr. Watson shared on the screen. In how I voted the last time, much of that was impacted by what I thought was a parking deficiency. And now that I see my error and my misunderstanding, I'm not sure. That I can find. That concern with health and safety either. I also would join with Commissioner Jorgensen. I support the expansion of this project as proposed to include to include additional ground for retail space and. Bar restaurant on the rooftop. What I think that'll. What I think that'll do for this project is give it a sense of place. And. Excitement to the area. If it goes, and I'm going to go a little off track here for a minute. Many of the people that I've been speaking to, our voters, have talked about how different this project is. It, it doesn't look anything like what we currently see in Garden City. I think that that's a resounding. Fear, comment, uh, that some of us all share to some degree or another. Some much less than others. I had a chance to. Review an article in paper. One of the papers that serves our area. And it was talking about our sister city Boise, a city that borders our city. And the, uh, the impact that the US Bank Building had when it was first built. The people didn't like it. It was, I think it was fourteen stories. It was really very tall and the tallest building really in the area. Or I don't know how many stories it was, but for fourteen years, it was the only building of that size. And then, uh, and shortly after that came Science Bank. Currently. Before the city council in Boise, we have a twenty-eight story Oppenheimer Residential Tower. A nineteen-story Scott Ludwig Tower at Fifth and Broad, Hubby Group Ovation. Nineteen-story residential on Sixth and Front, Ball Ventures, Alquist, Fourth and Idaho, thirteen stories. Uh, Edlin and Company, Jeff, uh, ten, ten West Jefferson, twenty stories. This is. This project does represent unfamiliar and new for Garden City. Maybe this project is first to the market, but the, the market is coming. And I think that we will see more of this. I thought, I think this is well, well thought out. I. I take my hat off to the people who've spent. Hours and dollars putting this together, including, uh, Garden City staff and communities. And, uh. If, um, if council president doesn't make a motion, uh, I am prepared to do so.
I'll let Councilmember Page make a motion. I just took a couple of, uh, points. I want to make the. I want to be. Clear what I'm, uh, the point I'm trying to, that I've made up here before and I'll, and I'll make it again. The, you know, I have enormous amount of respect for the people who serve as volunteers on our, our designer review committee. Planning and zoning, especially, um, whether there are parks and recre- parks, library board, all of those things that the city would not function without them. They do yeoman's work and they, um, you know, we sit up here and, um, you know, get the media attention or. Make final decisions, but ultimately much of the work, um, on any of these things gets done at that level before we ever see it. And so I'm enormously. Respectful of the work that they do and appreciative of that. That being said, the, you know, I, I'm still just, if, and my time up here is short. But if we're looking to make code changes, you know, I think what we've learned out of this, uh, application is I do think there should be. Uh, minimum ratios on, uh, retail and residential on any mixed use project going forward. And, uh, I, I also think that we need to look at, um, you know, what kind of decisions? Uh, or what kind of changes can a design review committee make? You know, as when they go and post those big black and white signs in people's neighborhoods and they tell you that there's a meeting on this day and there's a meeting on this day. And there's a meeting on this day. And, you know, people who I see in this audience show up at those meetings on those days, they submit testimony into the record. Um, and then ultimately that project was approved up here in, uh, in twenty twenty. But then suddenly the project takes on a, a scale. Uh, and then, and I understand first that there's three different projects that are all rolled into one here. But what we're talking about is that third and final piece, and that third and final piece has doubled in scale. It hasn't doubled. It's almost doubled. Um, and, and the proposed use. Is dramatically different than what happened as we went through that, uh, long process. And. You know, I, I just, I still don't believe those are minor changes. Uh, I, I think these are substantial changes. Uh, and, and I think there's, uh, you know, I'm not faulting that. If this is the project the developer wants to build, um, I, I'm appreciative of that. I'm certainly appreciative of the money they're spending in our city. But that is not the project that went through the, um, uh, the original process. And that was not the project that was approved. And, um. You know, and the bottom line was the decision, um, you know. No, like I said, I respect all the people on design review. The fact of the matter is none of those people have ever had a name on the, had their name on a ballot. And, um, I've done that four times. And, um, I just. I don't like what's happened here. Um, I don't like the optics of it. So, um, that being said, I'll turn it back over to my colleague, um, just to page.
I have a question for Mr. Waddams. Um, are you looking for roll call votes on these standards?
Uh, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Page, yes. On the, on the two standards that are in dispute, I think the cleanest way to do this. Is to make individual motions and roll call. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I move as to the standard. Formerly found is not compliant. The proposed design is in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulations of that district. I find that the C two, uh, zoning, uh, that this project currently is proposed for is a permitted use and is compliant.
You've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, uh, by roll call?
Councilmember Susan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item is standard proposed, uh, adheres to, uh, the protection of health, safety and general welfare.
I move to reverse our prior finding, uh. That. The project was not compliant. Uh, it did not adhere to the standards of the protection of the health, safety and general welfare. And to reverse that finding to one of compliance.
Do I have a second?
I would second.
I've got a motion and a second. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, uh. Or call or roll?
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan?
No. Okay. On the basis of those, uh, two motions, uh. Mr. Waddams, we need a motion to, uh. Uh, modify the previous. Uh, how, how, how do you want us to say that? Because.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Now on the screen, I put up the actual decision, um, part of the appeal document. And so. Based on the previous findings, the council vacated the design review decision, granted the appeal and denied the application. So it sounds like the council's going to reconsider that, uh, what, uh, request a motion specifying what's being modified. And it also sounds like the application is, has been modified again. So I, I think the decision should incorporate the modifications that are in the memorandum in support of the request for reconsideration.
So, uh, would the council actually vacate its previous decision as part of the motion?
Did vacate it or did modify it?
Modify the previous decision.
It's either affirm, reverse, or modify the appeal decision.
So the, the motion would be to modify the previous decision. With the two motions that have already been made, two findings that have already been made. Uh, and to incorporate in the approval. The, uh, declarations on page two oh one regarding, uh, the restaurant, the reduction of, uh. Living units. It's a, it's, uh, displayed in, on page two oh one of the packet.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I'll do my best. Okay. I moved that we reverse and modify our, our prior decision. Uh, thereby reinstating the design review decision, adding the declarations on page two oh one of. Of the council packet for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, namely, um, a reduction in, uh, living units to accommodate for, uh, additional retail and, and I. Additional retail. Restaurant, bar. Applications and I don't wish to be specific about that.
Okay. Got a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second.
We've got a motion and a second. Or call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan?
No.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Hey. The decision's been modified.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one, one last, and I'm sorry, I'm doing so many points of order, but there's one more matter, your honor, or your honor, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and that is, let me get to it. Under Lupa, there needs to be a written decision within sixty days or it's deemed denied. Um, our next scheduled council meeting is outside of that sixty days. And so I don't know what the council would like to do about that.
I'll, uh. I'll have to call a special meeting. I don't know what else to do because, uh, I had a note and didn't do it or sixty days.
Are we meeting in January?
We are, but the sixty days is from November.
Oh, I said October.
I mean, sorry, October.
Well, I have it just for the record, we received the request for reconsideration on November eighth.
Uh, November.
Okay. Um, and then so if it's, if the council does not issue a written decision within sixty days, then it's deemed denied. Uh, according to my math, sixty days from November eighth would be January seventh, and we're not scheduled to meet again until January tenth.
So, um.
So let's, let's notice a special meeting for, to take care of that one thing, uh, basically and, and ad hoc, uh, pro, pro hoc P J meeting.
Um, and. I'll coordinate the date because we may have another agenda item for special meetings as well. Okay? And we'll let you, obviously let you all know that it'll be, be some time between now and January seventh. Okay. All right, uh, we were gonna give it, the audience, uh, a chance to, uh, leave. Well, we've got to go into executive session for a few minutes. Charlie, are we going to read, we're going to adjourn after the executive session, Charlie?
Yes.
Yes, uh, I'm going to recess here for a few minutes. Uh, let everybody take a break and we'll reconvene. And, uh. Go into executive session at that time.